The meeting at four fifty-nine.
Hey Chief.
Hello Chief.
Hello.
Look at it.
Ah.
The solar panel. There he is.
There he is.
All those days, Sarah would be like that.
You were gonna send the police chief out, but you're not.
You were the family. I was deep in the bottles of state government.
Oh.
Very deep.
That is amazing, Mr. Sam. Come on up, Sam.
Unpaid receivable list in front of you. Having not heard from the timber tax delinquent payer, I sent him an attempted lien letter today. So he's got thirty days to pay, or we'll put a certified lien on the property.
Is this thing on her property?
No. Hmm, there.
So what do you put a lien on?
On his property.
Oh.
His property.
What piece does he own?
He has seventeen acres off the Interbell.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
That she's administering.
Okay.
Right. Um, so I had a conversation with her, I don't remember, two, three weeks ago. And I brought it up to her and she says, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we're gonna pay," and it never happened.
Okay.
Here we are. Uh, told her I'm going to the town clerks conference and...
He, weren't they ever been at North Carolina?
Uh, yeah, Bartlett.
Oh, Bartlett?
Bartlett, yeah.
Other than that?
It's quiet.
And you said that you are getting the loading machines, or you, they just made a decision on them?
The Secretary of State's sent out a, uh, from the division last week
Mm-hmm.
that the two tabulators have been selected, and now it's up to the towns to decide which one they're gonna go with.
Yeah, one's Dominion and one's...
Correct. Uh, there's a second nonprofit that's doing that one.
Yeah, and, but LHS is...
Is doing the Dominion machine.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Why should we care if they're not nonprofit or not?
They're not the animal that we know. They're coming out of, nobody's used them in New Hampshire. LHS has been used by the state of New Hampshire's clerks in school districts for thirty-odd years.
Yeah, we were one of the first towns to use LHS for loading machine. We were like a guinea pig, so we gotta, we gotta do it. Go shopping or something.
Hopefully they're gonna be giving us more information at the conference and I'm gonna be able to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
As for recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
And we did budget for that in this year's operating budget.
Yeah.
So if we're able to get some kind of decision and invoice before the end of the year, we can cover that money.
Yeah, it's a, you don't know how much they're gonna cost yet, obviously.
Looking six or seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. I think that's probably what the original one was, 'cause everybody gulped. Now it's like, yeah, whatever. Anything else exciting?
I think that's it.
Do you have any questions?
I do now.
I guess normally...
So names on there that I don't expect to see, I guess.
Yeah, I know, me too.
Um, down, sorry, is it? And the second page, S C F R F funding, those big ones are, um, New Freedom Academy.
Oh, they are, okay.
Ah, okay. What about Wentworth, the financials, that's second?
That's a property.
That's a property they rent out.
Oh, okay.
They're out of Manchester, I think.
Okay.
Um, they're just a, sort of a corporate rental corporation.
Yeah, okay.
That's up on the air, so.
Oh, we know where that is.
Yep. Um... Everybody's received a delinquency letter, so everybody's aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
None of them came back as nonbelievable, except for Barbara Burke, but that's actually no one that was planning, so.
She didn't answer her.
She didn't answer.
That's a good thing.
That's...
And we did send out the, uh, we are, uh, working on that piece of property. That's the one that they wanted to donate to the town.
Right.
And we sent, we finally got all the addresses of all the siblings, so we sent all the stuff out. And they have to have it signed and pulverized and sent back to us, and then we can make a D transfer.
Yeah.
It's still cooking on, right?
Well, we finally got the addresses a couple of weeks ago, and maybe last week sent everything out certified, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
That's one floor, even though even ten, and these three have the first selection. Okay, we'll tell you the summary bulletin sheet if you would. On the top, two hundred and thirty calls you had to date, looks like they had it last year, but you call it, you know, like a lot less than kinda had it last year, so forty since last meeting. It was a pretty active month. Um, multiple, uh, interesting calls. Uh, we used a U T V crisis fund once on the Androni recovery, and the other one up in Marvin. A lady had followed a GPS down a road that was impounded, even with four-wheelers, and maybe forty about, about three miles out. Going to get out, so we had to go, she wasn't hurt or anything, she just couldn't find out, so we had to go and rescue her. Uh, so we used our U T V crisis fund, so it was, it's pretty good, yeah. And then the Foster Road, the bucket that I took over on Foster Road, and we responded to that. Uh, some pretty significant injuries, not like threatening. But, uh, we had to close Foster Road, I called Henry, we had to close Foster Road for the nights, they'd come and investigate the failure of that, and they did. The next day, moved everything out.
How's she doing?
Haven't heard since, haven't heard since, unless they reach out to us, and how else we don't really recover. I mean, so, uh, they didn't, they didn't give them a very high threat injury, they put a forty foot fall. He was strapped into the bucket, so, um...
He went down with the bucket, or not?
Yeah. Yeah, so. Um, the fire prevention is a really busy month, the storage facilities on Power Road, they're kinda like, um... They've been cooperative, but they haven't resumbed the all-branch a little bit, I had to worry about access for them, so we get an ice block so we can access them. We went for a lot inspection, uh, last week on our road, the RV storage, they weren't ready for us, you know, they scheduled it, so we had to reschedule till next, till this past week. That was a three-hour inspection with the fire marshal's office to make sure the fire ramp system's all up and going, trying to get that done. Um, uh, so, you know, we're good to make sure we have access. Um, with these sub storage facilities, we're gonna have the access to the property, but everybody brings their own lock when you rent a place, so we, obviously, we don't have a key to any of those. So I had to buy a tool, it's a grinding tool, three, four hundred bucks, to put around the fire truck. We had another training session in the next couple of weeks on how to cut the locks, if you need to cut the locks. We don't have any, we don't have any tools to cut the doors open. We don't have that tool, we don't have the room for that tool. You know, I could probably spend buying it, but we don't have a room for that tool, so right now, we're just keen on the locking mechanisms, uh, moving into those facilities. Some of the challenges I see are the, the individual sub storage one for the householding, households, I did a walkthrough of those. Uh, from what it appears to be, there's two separate units where these people are residing in with their family and young children. Uh, so I turned that over to Joel, Joel's work with, you know, um, the company didn't, um, and issued, um, uh, addiction notices to them, so he's handling all that, but they're still there. So the addiction notice kinda takes time, and I noticed, you know, there was like a five-year-old girl in one of them, uh, you know, in or about, so a little bit of concern with that. But that's not uncommon for those properties, but we just kinda have the same on top of it, and encourage the owner with the same on top of that.
So even if they get the gate working down there, it's still gonna be...
Well, if you rent a place, you get access to the gate to get in and out of the property, and if you're a store, you're gonna do what you want, obviously, you can't live in there.
Right.
So, but people kinda, you know, doing what they need to do, and, um, that's a good sign.
What does the company do about this, or do they do nothing and just let it ride?
I'm not sure, so Joel's dealing with the company, Joel's on, sorry, as soon as I told Joel, he was on hold, you know what I mean? But, you know, we're gonna be the left one, one to respond to those, if we have an incident down there and all this, that's the only reason I bring it up. But Joel assured me he's on it, he already issued a di- addiction notices within, within less than a week after it was brought to his pension, I mean, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so those are my concerns with that. Uh, October fire prevention month, I have the, uh, three demo schedule for, um, the elementary school. I got one scheduled for Dewey, I got one scheduled for Quaker, who they always talk to me to do demos for the kids, so kinda like a busy month there. I did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago, uh, with Ken and Mandy and Joel, the Shaker Villas, it was really informative. Um, you know, they changed, they changed, uh, the contact person once again, but he seemed to be, you know, pretty engaged, and when he didn't know something, he told us he didn't know, and he'd figure it out, so, um... So it was a good, it was a good walkthrough that morning.
Who'd you go? Took you through?
Uh...
Todd. Oh, yeah, Todd.
Todd, yeah.
Todd.
Oh, I know, right here. New grounds, move a lot, senior facilities technician.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I scheduled a new Freedom's annual inspection by State Police, they need to have an annual inspection, that's coming up in a couple of weeks, so on fire prevention, a lot of my work this month. So new members, uh, one upcoming in early November, who'll be, he's been involved with the fire department a year, but he'll be eighteen in early November, so he'll be a full responding number. He's in school now for U T and by a fighter one, so. And, uh, on to the grants. Um, so communications man, one of the things I identified three years ago when I took over, was several things, but one of them was, was communication was inferior. Other than, other than your breathing apparatus and the fire gear you wear is probably one of our most important pieces of safety equipment. Uh, some of the radios in our town are dated, I believe, as nineteen ninety-six, some of the ones are still first line, and they recommend ten to twelve year lifespan on those, but bordering thirty years. Uh, and they, they don't work when you need them to, and, and the, the worst thing you can have is, is a firefighter, him or her, questioning their reliability of their equipment. Because if they question their reliability, their equipment is, that's gonna affect their performance. So one of the things that I kinda addressed, I knew it couldn't be solved with a budget, because to replace all the radios was, was eighty, ninety grand. Uh, I, I knew, you know, I wasn't coming to find you last week with that money, so I thought we'd work on the grant, last year we didn't get approved. Fortunately, uh, thanks to a corporation of a lot of people, Lieutenant Nelson, Kenny, the ladies, uh, all three ladies at the, uh, the town hall, including, uh, Cal in the last couple of weeks, um, had put in a lot of work, and, uh, we got it, we, um... Were awarded the, um, in this fact, behind you on page three, we are awarded a federal grant of, um, seventy-two thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. A five percent match is the number under at thirty-six, eighteen forty-three, for a total grant of, um, just shy of seventy-six thousand dollars. That will replace all of our radio equipment, uh, mobiles, which are the, uh, the radios that go on the fire trucks, the portables, which are the ones that people carry on them. And it'll extend our, our antenna at the, um, at the municipal complex by ten to twelve feet, that's gonna put that up, that's gonna enhance coverage for all, all departments in the town that utilize that equipment and extend the reach for that, so. Um, so this grant is gonna cost us, which I can absorb, assuming my budget stays the same in two thousand and twenty-four, uh, that budget stays the same, I can absorb the five percent match of my budget. The only thing I'm gonna need from you, before you ask, if your direction is for me to accept this, is to install everything and programs, it'd be about five thousand dollars, that's an estimate. Uh, from the contractor that I asked him to, to, um, it's gonna be programming, installing all those, and he gave me a estimate of about five thousand dollars, uh, so I need to kind of cover that, I wouldn't have that in my budget, so, um...
This is the antenna that's out behind the sleeping area?
Yeah, that's the antenna for, for all three departments.
Oh, it is, okay. They all got the same gear on there, or?
I, I'm not, I am not quite sure how they talk, the different, that radio, that radio, and all this, but that's the power that we all come and came from, yeah.
So what do we need to do with this, anything tonight, or?
So the only, uh, you're gonna, someone's gonna have to make a motion that you will accept the grant money and to move forward with it, and your budget for the, um, probably your award article for the installation costs. So there should be a motion tonight to accept that grant money and move ahead. I have until next Monday to accept the money for the town, I had one month of the time of that they, that they, um, they said you awarded the money to accept the money, then I have a year to finish the project.
Okay, so we got to... Nothing. Are we gonna make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion, we accept the money, uh, from this award grant and, um...
We budget the...
We budget the amount needed to match.
And install.
Yeah, and install.
Oh, and install, yeah.
Yeah. I can do the match on my budget, assuming my budget stays very similar in two thousand and twenty-four, I can, I can hit that, that thirty-six hundred dollar match on that radio line. And then in the year of that, by two thousand and twenty-five, uh, my radio line is ten thousand dollars, uh, I could, I'll comfortably cut that in half, if not more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So move to that, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
I have a question for you. I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Joseph over Manchester? 'Cause when they had that T-shirt thing?
Mm-hmm, that's him, he did all that.
That's Mike.
That's you. You say that about me and my dad also, and a younger version.
I just, and then they showed it again, and I said, "That's..."
I wanna put that on a poor kid, a poor kid.
So I, I said, I said, "No, that's, that guy's too young."
Thank you, thank you, bye.
Nice.
Well, thank you. You're next, Mike.
Did we get this, run tar over hall, project, yeah?
Okay, and your, um...
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, thanks. See, let's see. They handled eight calls for service in the last month, they did five traffic stops on one oh-six, two on Wells Road, one on Voice, one on Shaker. And they had a checkup, it was probably a van vehicle or something, and, uh, three motor carrier inspections, um, at Interbell West Road. That's the same statement. Then I had a copy in here for the schedule. Thank you guys, that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Still a little bit on the vacancy?
No, go ahead. No. Um, I'm new.
Go ahead. You know, yeah, the, I talked to the chief, uh, and some towns are, um... To try and recruit, uh, to fill these vacancies, they're adding some benefits, so we may have to look at that in the near future.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we discussed it a little bit.
Yeah, we did, I think it was, uh, some, some municipalities are offering a, a take-home cruiser.
Yep.
So, um... And I know, I think we're gonna have to review the pay scales too, to see, because...
Yes.
I've done some information the last few weeks on, um, pay scales at other agencies and private, um, companies that, uh, make it tough for us. Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
That's absolutely...
There, there were several that just raised their starving, and then there was, uh, some of them didn't sign on bonus, who recently...
Yeah, I think State Police are still doing the sign-on, okay?
That wouldn't surprise me.
I think, last time you, uh, ten thousand dollar sign-on...
Yeah, that, that's been about what it was, I just heard a one three seventy for fifteen, how accurate it is, I don't know, it was secondhand, but...
Yeah, that, that wouldn't surprise me, though.
No, no, everybody's pretty desperate right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to be good. Anything else?
Anyway, uh, just one other thing, so we have that direct patrol, one on Shaker.
Yeah.
Oh, we got another one in town, it's, it's about the same timeframe, so we gotta split between the two now, just so you're aware of that. So if you hear that we're not up there as much, that's gonna be why, so. Other than that, everything's pretty good.
Great.
Thank you.
Bye.
See you later. John.
I never get to hear what you say.
You can stay late, Rachel, but listen to... Just a thought, John's worth staying late, or?
I don't know tonight, that's true.
Well, yeah, that's...
Walk out crying, you're a sunder.
This might be the night to stay, though. Oh, no, it's alright.
I don't know, I picked that one.
I don't know, but...
Yeah, it's a good idea, you know?
Wow.
No.
Hi, Rach.
Hey.
Hey.
How are you? Um, thank you, Cal, for my budget, and for so many other things you do. Um, so, um, Friends of Alton Public Library, um, had their fall meeting on, a week ago today. Uh, and they're in a process of transition, I think I've mentioned before, but feeling very secure in their new bylaws and policies. Um, and they're very generous to us in terms of programs, um, but thanks to Demia Fisher and Jesse Tishko and their executive board. Much like the library, there were a lot of things to... That had been neglected, um, and so they're really in a point that a lot of our policies and bylaws, um, have been rewritten and formalized. And, and happy to say that the Friends of Alton Public Library, as a five-one-C-three, has been able to do the same thing. So that helps a great deal. Um, we have a new arts policy, um, because we are joining and collaborating on many things with Jen and David in the new store to do, um, a community arts exhibit in the library. Um, so that's just one example of, of what we'll be able to do with the store. Um, I'm gonna be away, uh, for two weeks in October, um, the next two weeks, my trustees will be checking in on the staff. Um, Cheryl Anderson and, um, Rosie Howe are in charge. Um... Yeah, we're in good shape, but, um, you probably don't want to hear this, but rain is leaking in on the flat parts of the roof, which are no mystery, because it's the same roof that it's always been. And of course, we did the, we never did the, the flat, and so that's nineteen fifty-three.
Okay.
Um, and I had Nick write about four years ago, Common Patch, and before that, I think it was Brian Hutchinson. Um, but maybe when Berwick comes to do the back, he could take a look at that? Thank you, that, I would've called you ahead, but it just...
It's good.
Um, and, but...
Any idea where it's coming in?
Yeah, right in my office.
Oh, okay.
And, um, and that's the traditional place, basically wherever the peak, I can't use my words today, wherever the peak hits the flat.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's normal.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and I don't know, I've just been replacing ceiling tiles, but with the amount of rain that we've had this summer, amount of ceiling tiles as well. Um, but with the amount of rain, I think it just pools in that area, so...
Okay.
It's probably a quick fix, uh, it's not the gutters, because you had gotten up there and hauled those out. Um, I did that this last weekend, but I think it's just that seam.
No tennis balls in the gutters?
No tennis balls in the gutters. It's kinda like when Jerry Keener found a red pair of reading glasses on the toilet.
Hmm.
I had no way out of that, but... Ken got me for the tennis balls, 'cause I was in Children's Library.
There was little trees growing in the gutter.
Really?
Like, "Why is this stuff going up there?"
It's like a ladder going up, there was a tennis ball stuck in the house, buddy.
So, as an only child, how do you play catch?
That's true.
Throw them on the roof.
Yeah.
I'm an only child, I can't advise the other people. So again, I can't get a little bit... But that's what I have, um, I have, um, sent my preliminary budget to my trustees as of last Monday, but they've had a chance to look that over. Uh, and then on our next meeting on, um, October sixteenth, uh, I'll hit them with it again. Um, nothing, nothing big this year, um, but we need to move around a couple of things. So, and thanks to Cal and Mary for always giving me updates, and I've been able to kinda keep that going well, so thank you. When do you need my budget?
We typically send out a note asking for first draft budgets by November first.
Perfect.
On the first selectives meeting in November, just so we can review them and take some time to review them and, and, um... And again, that's the, that's the first draft, and we sort of expect changes before the end of the year, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, it's ready to go.
Okay.
They just have to understand that.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Should we talk to that other guy that did the roof on the store, or?
Could, I got his card.
I think it might be, that perfect job for him.
Yep.
Uh, Peter Lattis? Lattis, I think, yeah. He did the store roof and...
Nice.
He's familiar.
Been doing some, yeah, right? He's out of Chichester or...
Yeah, he kept, met him somewhere, but it's not coming anymore.
Because it was, um, who did the shingling?
The shingles?
Yes.
Uh, it was, um, Marquis from Loudoun.
Marquis, wow, they were fast.
He has, yeah, but he's not as, uh...
This is...
Not able to contact him as easily anymore.
Okay, and this is one of the...
Doesn't seem to respond very often.
This seems more like a finesse job, you know, and you just...
Yeah, I, I think somebody needs to go and take a look at it and try and figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
And that's not a, it's not an unusual place where it leak where the stone meets the flat roof.
Hmm. And despite the age of the rubber mat, I think it's doing really well.
Been very fortunate.
It really is.
They're using a less than wall, yeah.
Yes, the same one, with fireworks on it. 'Cause that was a great idea.
Yeah, well, nobody's put a stove more up, while they had to get the stove, stove off, but...
Not for a while.
'Cause they did it at one of my fire stations.
Really?
Well, they did it here once, too.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't know what we did.
It doesn't surprise me.
Wonder what we visited category? Just doesn't surprise me. Firefighters looking for the easy way out.
Firefighters, say that.
There's gotta be a better way. Like all priesters.
And I have to, tonight reminded me, I gotta talk to Chief Gamache about someone stealing the truck. My dad's gonna defer permission for that.
Gotcha.
That's worth following up. Thank you all.
Thanks for the job.
Bye, and thank you, John.
John?
He's got a big ticket on the wall.
Yes, he does. They were teasing him all the way, and I happened to follow.
I will say that, uh, I know we did a little training with CPR, and I know there's two very qualified people over there, just in the hands. Not saying for you, maybe for me. I'll sit down for this meeting, 'cause I know it's a hot seat, I'd say nice and warm.
Right.
So, maybe notice the grass has gotten a little long, uh, Boden's back at school and playing sports, and he still has his catering job, so. Not fitting in very well, so Freddy went up and worked on Maple Grove today, and we're letting him get up, but we're still trying to take care of things. Uh, we still have a gentleman out for, and I know, out of time.
I have, I have an update on that. Um, I spoke with him today, and it's looking like another three weeks of physical therapy, so...
And we have one taking class to learn how to drive.
Yeah, C D L.
And with Evan took a little vacation in Montana, Grange has been a little empty.
He was running the green grader the other day.
Evan?
Is Caleb, would Caleb be interested in getting a little extra time in tomorrow, do you think, or?
He has issues of his own... He has issues of his own.
Okay.
And he may not be around this week.
Okay.
Let's, um, say we'll know better tomorrow afternoon.
All right. I'll talk to you Wednesday.
He has, uh, an appointment.
Okay.
That came up. With, uh, two.
We all get it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so you mentioned the grader, yes, the green grader is out, it is running. The reason for that is the other one, as, um, it's been described nicely as a boat anchor at this point. It can't be fixed, the part is obsolete, not available in the, the whole, uh, world. Network of Volvo. Um, we've been calling, uh, dismantling places, and if they're nice, they laugh at us. If not, it's, uh, no way.
How old is that machine, John?
It's an old one. Um, it needs a computer.
Is that what the problem is?
Yes.
We tried bypassing around, and all we did was confuse the machine more.
I noticed when the green was out there grading, it looks like it doesn't have quite enough power, so it gets, keeps getting hung up and blade gets left in.
A little relearning curve happened.
Oh, okay.
Um, and there is very much slop in various areas, but it, it spun over three times and started, and, um, it seemed eager to work for the moment. So we will try to go with what we can with that. Um, I called a few places for rentals not to be, not to be had right now. And, um, Jeff hasn't gotten back to me yet, the cat salesman, to see what's going on with that.
We are, we are members of the Mutual Aid Association. Um, the DPW has a mutual aid setup similar to the fire service. And, um, we can put a request out if we're in need of a piece of equipment or whatever, um, to see if anybody would, would be able to help us out. So.
I saw that.
That system was used a lot in the floods earlier this year, uh, in the western part of the state. I don't know, I can contact the coordinator and see if there's an availability at some point, uh, or if we could, could get somebody to come out, you know, their grader, or we could use it, or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know.
If we use it, is there a rental fee, or how does that work?
Well, no, it's part of the mutual aid compact, and what happens in the cases of the floods, the federal government kicked in some money, but in a case like this, uh, it would be... We're, we, we are, we have equipment and people available.
Yeah.
To send out, and we, the town would, uh, would pay for that. Um, and the same thing in a case of mutual aid where some comes in.
Yeah.
They would, the other town would pay for it, unless we came up with some kind of agreement out of town.
Yeah.
But I just want to let you know, we are a, a part of that, so that is a, that is a potential, uh, help for us in the near future, for short term anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether this is normal routine work, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I don't know.
Push.
Yeah.
Um, it was inspection month, uh, very expensive. If you saw my repair lines in the budget, you'll see two and three hundred percent over. One truck needed gear brakes, the pickup needed coilover struts on the front. Exhaust pack, there's gonna be like sixteen hundred dollars. It's just... You've heard about Foster closed for a couple days this, this month.
Yes.
Tree work seems to be going on all over the place for PS&amp;H, and now the cable trucks are running all over the place on the east side. Trying to do what there's going to be. The reclaimers started up today, so shake the road is now tore up.
What'd you do, grind it?
Yeah. Um, reset the grades and, you know, deep paving that, you know, these are two, but it's gonna set for a little bit.
Is that what the grader was up there, or?
Yeah.
Is that pike?
Pikes. Um, yeah, reaching out to Cat, and I was reaching out to Fairfield, seeing what our status is there. We have a truck sitting up there. So, the dump, we're trying to ship paper, that was our day today, to move the bales out of the, uh, salt shed up to the upper level. We moved a trailer away from the loading dock, and hopefully that's going out tomorrow. It better not rain over there.
Hopefully not.
It wasn't the forecast, but we did, we did top it. So that's supposed to happen tomorrow, and God, Lord, they haven't, uh, sent me a loadout for that yet. But it'll, it'll end us costing us roughly three hundred dollars to do that. They gave us fifteen a ton for the paper, and charges six, six hundred for trucking. So, we end up paying three if it works out.
Yeah.
And nothing on plastic yet. And I already mentioned, we may be going down a guy, but hopefully not, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
For the dump.
Um, just on the equipment side, I figured, uh, little information. Um, the equipment, I know there was a question about the age. So the grader is a 2001, the backhoe is a 2006, the loader is a 1989, and the packer is a 1999. Um, our cap reserves, the grader, we have three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. The backhoe, we have forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And the loader, we have one hundred and fourteen thousand and thirty-two dollars. That was as of August 31st. So, um, if you're looking at costs, um, the grader is two seventy-five, three eighty-five. If you have anything else, John, or?
No, my last price was three eighty-five.
Yeah. Um, we already know the backhoe, we got a, a price on that. And I think last year we had a, a price of two fifteen on loader, a cap loader, so.
So does that mean we have to go back for more money for the grader, or do we have enough?
No, we don't, we only, for the grader, we have three eighty-five. Now, the, what we do is, we, uh, let's see, putting in... Can we put thirty thousand in the grader in the year?
Yeah.
Is it thirty? Yeah, thirty thousand for the grader. That's our, our normal deposit is for the cap reserve account. So with, uh, with the three seventy-six in there now, and another thirty, if we were to buy it, um, you know, after town meeting, if we put in one hour, come in town meeting to buy it, we'd have enough, so, um...
How long are they to acquire?
Well, that's what my question to Jeff was gonna be today, but...
Just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Yeah.
That was...
And I will throw out, I think Evan walked in behind me, but we were, we were talking about adding a, a roll system behind it, so that, that would be more money to neither here nor there at this point.
Is it just roll behind the grader, or is it thump, or do anything like that, or?
Well, depends on what, uh, system you, you look at. They have a, a steel, uh, smooth drum for a tire system. You seen the rubber tire rulers on the pavement?
Yes.
Similar. No idea on prices on that, but we're just kicking that out.
Yeah.
On the wish list side.
It may just be a wish list, but that, I mean, the road is rougher than it was before we graded it the other day, and I'm wondering if it's because we're leaving all the...
From, from the stone.
Yeah.
We, we didn't cut hard enough to reset all the stone.
Okay.
That was a smoothing, see, let's see if we blow any hoses.
Yeah.
Leave a special pothole in front of someone's house type, you know.
You got that one.
Yeah, so, but like, like now, there, there's no fixing the yellow right now.
Is it worth anything, or? Can't even, parts work, can't be worth much, huh? It seems a little short, is it, to you, or thirty-two years?
They've been telling us for a couple of years now, when you try to bring them up, oh, we don't have to supply parts. That's TNT.
Well, we don't need to deal with Volvo, it sounds like to me, either.
They're just, that was just giving us a heads up, I guess. Time's up. There's some out there for sale. Seem to be outrageously priced, with the amount of hours on them.
Yeah.
Nine, twelve thousand hours, I mean, we just barely broke nine. Coming up on nine. I know we had some years of light use, but... Can be a busy, it's needed machine.
Yeah.
Especially this year.
Yes, I know the loader, two fifteen was the last quote, I didn't know if you'd mentioned that, too.
Yeah, two fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah, we have roughly half of that in the cap reserve. So. Um, and that is the oldest piece of equipment we have.
Yeah.
And with the backhoe, of service, it's being used more.
Yep.
So.
And I will say, it is feeling its age, it's showing its age, and I'm trying not to be aggressive with it.
Yeah.
It's true, but when the backhoe comes, it will be the loader.
Yeah.
More than likely for a while.
They're still one up at the dump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's a new packer, go to coffee?
Depends on what you go for.
I think if we keep running that thing, this doesn't get many miles along, though.
Yeah.
We gotta get into the side of the motor on that on a rainy day, it's dumping some oil out on us. So we gotta pull the air compressor off, and it's not a five-minute fix, but we have a day and a half to work on it one of these days.
We have to consider during budget to start putting more money aside.
I think you are.
That's what I was thinking too.
Well, soon we got to do one.
Yeah.
Well, it, it's, it's just practical, you know, you're gonna own, probably almost complete the grader to start figuring out how much you're gonna be putting away and kind of cipher out how long the machines gonna last and...
Yeah, I mean, this, this plays out pretty good, except that it passed a year quick.
Yeah.
You know, because town meeting, you should be able to say, yeah, we're just gonna write a check and we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Providing they don't jump too bad.
Right.
Um...
Yeah, that's...
These, these specs we've been kicking around for a long time, and I know that I have an operator somewhere that, um, wants to look at the joystick, they have different systems, and see if we can do better. I don't know how, where that's gonna be in the price range, but...
Yeah.
This is one spec that has been picked out for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Any other questions?
Nope.
We'll, we'll have to come up...
We'll continue on with what we're doing now.
Yeah.
We'll have to come up with something, when's our next meeting with the budget? Maybe December?
Uh, it'll be either, probably the first of December.
Yeah.
We try to get the budgets from the departments in for the whole year.
Yep.
And then we try and meet with the budget committee.
Yeah, because it's, you know, it'd be unheard of, not unheard of, but awful if they had to come up with the money at a town meeting because we didn't have any money aside for a piece of equipment. It just makes financial sense to...
Next batch, they come up for the backhoe and the grader.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, John.
You didn't have to use a CPR.
Not yet. Okay. Do we want to sign some things and then? We have a manifest in the amount of...
Sign up.
Yeah, the next day, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Still moved. Second? I think I may have an extra collection. There we go. Thank you.
We have a inter-transfer funds. We don't have to vote on this one.
No.
For fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-two, twenty-four. It's for the highway truck. You have in red here, transfer amount, is that the actual amount that we're spending to the...
Yes, okay, yeah, exactly. That includes the liabilities check and the F line.
Okay. Where's the doc? Huh? Where's the doc?
I can probably call them and ask.
Payroll manifest in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, eighty-six cents.
Still moved. Second? I also have a payroll check here for the treasurer. For language.
I'll give this back to your gestating here.
Just put it in there.
We have an intent to cut on map two forty-one, lot seventeen, Baptist Hill Road.
So. Second?
I don't even have to move the motion, right?
Like, don't like...
The what?
The, um...
Intent to cut?
Intent to cut.
No, doesn't like to move.
No.
No.
Right next to mine. They don't make those spaces very good.
You still have signatures, Cheryl?
Yes.
Do you have anything else there, or?
It says letter for mailbox.
Yeah, I got that right here. Um, I know Cheryl and Kent have come in and signed it, um, but I did some checking and, um, the... I was gonna send it to the postmaster, so let it to, to Senator Sheen. I was gonna CC it to the postmaster, uh, general, the postmaster at Totten, but there are actually, I didn't realize we have, uh, regional representatives for the post office, so I CC'd it, I changed that at the bottom, so all three of you could sign it, and then, uh, I'll... So I C C'd it, I changed that at the bottom, so all three of you could sign it, and then I'll get that out.
Just the one place?
Just the one, yep, yep. Yeah, there is, uh, there's a picture of the mailbox, and then, um, the last page is just a map that Mark Stevens had drawn, just a hand-drawn map, I'm not gonna include that, but just for our purposes there, where the line is. You put that with the sign for the, Joe.
New business.
You know, you also have the engagement, I forgot, this can be part of it, we signed it. This is the engagement letter for the attorney for the withdrawal, the school withdrawal committee. Um, and it needs to be signed here, so, um, there's only one signature in there, I think it's on the third page, show.
Yeah.
Is for the twelve grand or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you got the, all that stuff.
I did indeed, and I looked at it.
Yeah, I looked at it, and then I looked at it again.
Yeah, there's a lot of material there.
And all, uh, I want.
What's this?
The, the email on, from the school withdrawal committee, I sent that to you too.
Really?
Yeah, this morning, you probably didn't look at it. Okay, do you want that and this?
Oh, put it beside it. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Highway demands.
Yes.
Oh, the minutes, yeah, did you read the minutes?
Yeah.
I do as well.
Any changes?
No.
Here, no changes.
So?
Second?
Thirded.
Thirded? Is that what it is?
I don't know.
I believe it is now.
It's right, we just need to go on.
Yeah. So, under new business, uh, we did the engagement letter, we did the higher department equipment status, and the only thing left on there, uh, that I have for new business is, um, I got a contact from the town of Lostwood, we have a intermunicipal agreement with them for our building inspector. Um, basically, if we need a building inspector, they provide one, vice versa. Um, they are, they'd like to meet, talk to me about this, uh, because they are changing the way they fund their building inspector program over there. So, um, we've only, we use them once or twice a year when Joel's on vacation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this year he did one visit to Canterbury. So my thought is that, that we could come up with a way to either pay him as a subcontractor, or some, somehow do that, take care of it that way. We have wage line, it's only, we're spending more money, so our, our, our budget, won't impact our budget. It's just that we'll pay it up to somebody else, not Joel. So, I'm gonna meet with them on Thursday morning, um, with the town administrator and planning director over there. To talk to them on that, and then I'll come back to you guys with a, a new plan, so.
And cap, cap reserves, we're gonna be working on that for the budget.
Yes, yep, yep.
Did, did you ever hear that from, remember Northfield willing to meet with us?
Nope, they never contacted us about the new agreement for Ayers Road. So, I haven't heard anything, John hasn't heard anything. Um, the way I look at it now, we have an agreement in place and
Yeah.
Continue doing our part of it, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Old business. Treasurer's safe update.
Yep, we have a new safe up there, I think I said you guys the procedure.
Yep.
Um, we're using it, so far, things are going well. That's pretty much it, it's bolted to the wall up there, so it's secured and, um, I think, hopefully this will, will allow some flexibility of a part of the treasurer to do payrolls and, and get cash, so.
It's heavy. He put the whole thing on me.
Well, stop your wine.
No.
Now he's shared it.
Wait a minute, but both of us brought it in.
It's a, just a, yeah, those.
Yeah, it's just one of those century fires, they go.
Yes, those are heavy.
Yeah.
It was century briefcase supposedly fireproof, but I was told by a firefighter from town that fireproof doesn't necessarily mean it won't burn.
Right, I would agree with that, yeah.
Right. Right.
Yeah, fireproof is kind of a misnomer.
Up to so many degrees.
Yeah.
Plenty of fireproof buildings that have it's not.
Um, the broadband expansion update, uh, I have the language here for the B M G I, uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, so we need to make a motion, you guys need to make a motion, and I have the language here. Um, so, we can provide them with minutes, we have a motion in it, if you guys support, uh, this, and then they can put that in the application.
So, how do we know in the end that it's gonna cover the shit that we missed the last time? Right, on the. You mean, don't be getting everything in this that we need to sell our customers?
So, what, what, the way the grant works is, uh, the grant covers seventy-five percent of, the B M G I money covers seventy-five percent, and Comcast would cover the other twenty-five percent of the cost.
Right, but I mean, do we have spots in the town that are still not gonna be covered, or?
So, we, they, they, the process is, as, uh, Ryan Critterson explained, the F C C has a map of all of the addresses in the town.
Yeah.
And that's what it's based on, is that map, so. Again, if, if they're going down Old Tilton Road, because it has all these houses in their map, and there's a vacant lot there, and in three years, somebody puts in a house, well, the cable's going by, and they would contact the cable company, and they'd have to install it, pay for installation if they were, you know, they, they do two hundred feet off the road without a cost. So, if it's less than two hundred feet, then Comcast would hook to the house, the new house. It's, we get the list of addresses from Comcast, I talked to Mandy, we went back and forth through all of our mapping and everything, and it was twenty or so houses that were kind of up in the air, and Ryan said last time that before, before anything is finalized, then we would get a copy of the new map and go through it, and make sure that we have what we consider every address, um, that the town has. So, I, I, I mean, you know, there could be some human error at some point down the road, but I don't, I, I'm hoping that, that we get pretty much every road. The only ones I see that may be confusion on, but I think they're covered, were, um, let's see, the road that comes, you have to come into Loudon to get into Canterbury, there's one house out there. I can't remember the name of the road.
Misery?
Nope, no, no, it's, uh.
Not Aspie.
No, it's across from where, just past where Mary Hoppen lives, there's a road that goes in.
Oh, 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 Flag. Flag Road.
Flag Road.
Hmm.
Yep, yep, you have to come in, you have to get to it from Loudon, there's one house there.
Yeah.
Um, so that may be the only question, I, that I can see, um, but that was on the list the last time, so I, that, in my mind, that's, there are any of the roads in town where I'm thinking, well, which road aren't they gonna cover, you know?
Yeah.
Cause even our dead-end roads, like Misery Road and, um, well, even, even roads like where the smokehouse is and stuff, there's houses at the end of those dead-end roads. So those houses aren't listed, so that means they gotta go past all these other vacant lots, so to speak.
Yeah.
So it would be available in the future if somebody was there.
It's a low road, it's dead end.
Oh, they're not going up there, you know?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but, but, but there's nobody past you.
They're not going up there.
Correct.
So, and your house is on the list of
A speaker.
Of the houses that are there.
Will be the, will be the last.
So as long as that last house is on the address of the FCC map, then we should be clear.
Yeah, and then what do they do with respect, for instance, the smokehouse, maybe they think it becomes class?
Class six, yeah. They wouldn't go beyond that, they would go to the last house that's, that's there now.
Yep. Yep.
Um, and then.
So, we're, I'm thinking Hancock is an example.
Yep, yep.
Um, they would just bypass Hancock Road completely, right?
I would have to look at the map to see if those two houses down there are on the list.
Yeah.
That's the only, those are the ones that are questionable, Liven Road and a couple of those, and Byden Roads.
Well, actually, that was my first, yeah.
Uh, but I'll, I'll have, I'll look at the list, but there was, I think the last time we looked at it, Mandy and I came up with twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two houses that we were questioning.
Yeah.
And, um, so, and if we can identify those, then we should be all set.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
And is the easiest way to do this, to make this the form of a motion?
Make, make that an motion.
Cal Road, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion and.
I'll give it to her afterwards.
I, I'm not gonna try to make this.
I, I wouldn't ask you to, I think that's, but we've all read it, so, so I'll make this in the form of a motion.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Probably should read it just for irony, if we have one.
Okay, then I will, alright. So, the town of Canterbury Board of Selectment makes a motion to endorse the application of Comcast Cable Communications LLC, also known as Comcast, to the New Hampshire Broadband Matching Grant Initiative, B M G I, to provide broadband service to unserved locations in Canterbury. Whereas the town of Canterbury Board of Selectment finds Comcast to be technically managerial and financially capable of meeting the obligations of the B M G I fund request. Whereas Comcast has the operational capacity and experience to extend its network to additional locations, the Canterbury Board of Selectment hereby votes to select Comcast as the agreed, agreed upon B M G I provider.
Yes.
So moved.
Second? Thirded.
Third, oh, in favor, a thirded, a thirded.
Thank you, thank you.
When is this gonna occur, do you know yet?
Uh, the application period is open, has to be, applications have to be in by the end of October, um. And he said a quick decision by the end of the year. By the end of the year is what we're hoping that the, the decisions will be made. And he seemed confident that, yeah.
So, do we keep our mouths shut rather than jinx this, or do we talk about it, or, I don't know what to?
I don't know.
I, I just want all the phone calls to.
Well, I mean.
Son of a house.
No, just stop.
The minutes are gonna show that we're supporting this.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
So that's what we do, and, and, I mean, we've applied, they applied previous to this.
Yeah.
And we didn't get it, so we're just applying again to a different grant. There's more, I think they're more confident in their opportunity this time, because a lot of the big areas of the state have been addressed. So now, the state is looking to, uh, uh, fill in the gaps, so to speak.
Yeah.
And, as they said, Brian said, there's, uh, twenty-five thousand from, uh, this B M G I grant, and the state is gonna kick in another forty-five, four, uh, yeah, twenty-five billion, and the state's gonna kick in another forty million.
Yeah.
So sixty-five million that's available for hopefully this gap, um, funding. Did Brian, and I think he may have sort of alluded to it, but to complete the town, any idea how much money lies? I don't know, I know that in their, in their, um, response to our request for a bid.
Yep.
Um, they had given us a per mile cost.
Yeah, right.
Which is part of the confidential bid.
Yep.
Um, I can't imagine that cost has gone down.
Right.
So, I don't, but I don't know what they figure for miles.
Yeah, yeah.
They gave us a cost per mile, but they didn't say, this is what the mileage is.
Yeah.
Or this is what the total cost of the project is.
Yeah. So when?
But that'll be part, that will be part of the application.
Yep.
So we will know then.
Yeah, cause the application, I assume, is matter of public record.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, they ran a fiber optic cable up there in the borough up to Mary Cage when the cell tower was there. Is that something they're gonna utilize, or is it just gonna sit there empty, or what?
That boy, yeah. Boy, yeah.
Yeah, we did that.
It went right by all those houses, you'd think they would have kept it, I bet you did.
We waited. Hey.
Yeah, but it was for, it was, it wasn't Comcast that ran it.
No, it wasn't, I didn't know if they had a deal.
So, it was, somebody else owned the, the line, so they weren't gonna use that as.
Yeah.
So, but they won't use it.
No.
It, it wouldn't surprise us if they didn't.
Yeah, somebody else's property, yeah.
Has it consolidated?
Maybe.
Cause they did fiber optics.
Well, in certain places.
Yeah.
I think it was A T and T or one of those.
Or would have had to have been for the.
For the cell tower.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who owned the cell tower.
It's down. I've heard it's down, so.
Yeah, yeah, it is still down.
Yeah, I don't know.
Heard of it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, H D C, they're scheduled to meet with us the first meeting of October. I had a call from, uh, Mr. Leininger last week. They still feel that this is not, has not risen to the level where they feel it should be on the ballot, uh, for zoning changes. Um, our attorney doesn't agree with that, I don't agree with that. There are portions of what they have proposed that are procedural and don't rise to that level, but there are also portions that our attorney pointed out, I think I sent you guys an email to them.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, um, they're coming in, they wanna talk to you guys about this, uh, they didn't know if we wanted the attorney to be present at that meeting or not. I'd said it's up to you guys, whether you want the attorney to come in, um, it's up to you guys, uh, so.
You wouldn't tell? Come before the town and get it voted on like everybody else?
Yes, I, I.
I probably shouldn't say anything too early, but.
No, no, but I, I, I read it and I, I found some of it concerning.
I, I, my point, my point to Jeff was, that if there's an appeal, and, and if we don't go before the town and change zoning or whatever, if there's an appeal, the attorney that's going to be representing the town is the same one that reviewed it and recommends it going to zoning. So, I'm not an attorney, Jeff's not an attorney, and that's what I said to him, I said, they're the ones representing us and they're the ones that are gonna defend us if there's some kind of appeal, or something like that, I said, it's their advice that we get part of this before the town, I think that we should follow that.
Right.
He disagrees, so I, that's, I think it's up to you guys to, to, um.
Spend all the money and get it done right.
Zoning amendments can be forwarded through the planning board or the board of selectmen. Those are the two authorized to make zoning amendments in the board.
So which would you prefer?
Well, I think, in this case, I would recommend the selectmen, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the planning board hasn't been part of the process, and they haven't been included in it, you guys have, so I would think that this.
Well, we're not lawyers.
No, but you guys have the ones, are the ones that have requested advice from the attorney, and, so I think that's, that's the path that I would, I would suggest.
And is the attorney that would be here that night, that attorney?
Probably, yeah, yes.
I mean, yeah.
It's the, it's, it's the law firm and.
Yeah.
Mike Courtney is, Bart Mayer has been our attorney for many years.
Right.
Um, he is, um, transitioning into semi-retirement, so to speak.
Yeah.
Um, Mike Courtney has been doing this for a long time and is, has kinda taken over a lot of the municipalities.
Yeah.
For Bart, so, um, so I know Mike has represented us in a couple of previous court cases, so.
Yes.
Most likely be him.
Okay.
I, I think it's worth having him here.
I do.
When we correspond, typically when we correspond with the attorney, I send it to Bart and Mike.
Yeah.
If they have, they have attorneys in their law firm that specialize in different areas of municipal government, labor and land use, things like that. And Mike has been the one to answer these questions, he hasn't given me, to a different attorney.
Yeah.
To talk to about this.
Yeah.
So my guess is it would be, it would be Mike Courtney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I really feel.
So ask him to be present?
Yeah.
See if he's available that night?
Yes.
Alright.
When did you say this is coming up again?
Uh, it's October second, I believe it's the first meeting.
Coming right up.
Ten, two. Isn't it, ten, two?
Ten, two, yeah. Um, let's see. Um, just a quick personnel update, um, Macau and Jesse got through their ninety day, um, intro period, and we did evaluations on both of them, and so that's done, and they're both getting bumped up in their salary. Uh, for, it's an automatic, once they get through the introduction period. Um, as I said earlier, the highway department, uh, employees out for another three weeks. Um, and that's pretty much all the information I have on that. And then I have, um, the, uh, New Freedom Academy, we had, uh, I had a, a question from the planning board on, on that facility on. They have a document that, uh, was, uh, done through the planning board and ZBA in two thousand fifteen on their policies and procedures and, um, there seems to be some conflict between that document and what they're advertising. So I asked for clarification from the New Freedom Academy if those policies and procedures are still in place, so I'm waiting to hear back from them.
Thanks.
So, uh, we'll see how that pans out.
Yeah.
I, it, it's not a, a critical issue, but I, it's the one that I think I'd like to try and clear out.
Yeah.
So, um, I think. I think that's all I have.
No, after all that information we got on roads from the planning board, did, did they get an update from the attorney as to what his feelings were?
On which one?
On the, uh, the roads.
Oh, so, uh, I met with the planning board chair this morning with Kent, and, um, they're, uh, gonna proceed as they should. Um, they're, they are not going to, um, I guess disallow this subdivision to go in because of the road. They talked with, I talked with Greg and he felt, no, no, you can't, and, um, it was kind of reverse of what I thought was gonna happen, so, um, I think they're handling it according to our attorney the way they should.
Okay.
So that's, that's.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. And what will happen is it, it'll shift the burden to, to you guys when the, if the, if the subdivision goes through and the landowner wants to build out there, then it would, the burden would shift to you to provide a private road waiver. And some kind of road maintenance agreement. So that, that's how that process works. Even if it's subdivided in, in a, what's considered a buildable lot, they still don't get a building permit until the board determines that they have a road waiver in place. There are some municipalities that don't allow building on private and class six roads, so.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
I think we've, we've upgraded our system in the last five, six years to, to allow people to do that in a way that allows public safety to have access to their buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all right, is it all going right to you?
Yes, it does. I think it was just confusion about who said what.
Yeah, well, you know, I kind of knew all of that stuff, but it's like.
No, but it's mind boggling.
It was?
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it's almost as complicated as reading the tough road to travel stuff, it's.
Hmm.
Going back and forth and back.
Totally good.
Yeah, and, and you get.
There is a, um, NHMA is, is sponsoring a class, uh, on the hard road to travel. Um, and there's both, uh, uh, in-person attendance and, uh, virtual attendance, uh, available. Um, I. It's coming up the first Friday of October.
Yeah.
I'll send you the emails.
Yeah.
Um, and if you do sign up for the virtual one, I think they provide you with a video copy.
Boom.
As well as a electronic copy of an updated hard road to travel. I have a two thousand twenty-one version, electronic copy of it.
Yeah.
Um. The, there aren't a lot of big changes in it, it's, it's a, I think it's a very valuable tool. Um, I still have a two thousand eighteen copy that I have highlighted and marked up and.
Yep.
Sticky noted and everything.
I want that copy.
If there's something, if there's something that I'm not sure of, I go back and I go to the electronic one, the updated electronic one, and get that. Cause, uh.
That's expensive, that book.
It is, it is expensive.
Eighty or ninety bucks.
Yeah, and, and if you go to the class, there are some, typically, uh, their attorneys are the ones that are there. And they have specific areas that they'll focus on during the class, but then they have a question and answer period, and, um, there's, there's usually a lot of good questions that come here. So.
Is it open to any official in town?
Municipal official, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll send you the, the link and, and that way you can look at it, and if you wanna get in on it, please do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, it's one of those where, well, the book is this thick, and it has, has all sorts of really good information in it.
Yeah.
So.
It's been a good reference all the years.
It has been a good reference, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you have anything? Are we done?
That's it.
What were your turn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.